All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this live broadcast of a virtual meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being conducted in a virtual format where members are participating via telephone or other electronic means as authorized under Minnesota State Statutes, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local health pandemic. We'll now introduce Chair Perry to convene this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Blanford. I want to thank everyone for joining us today and welcome everyone to this meeting. For the record, my name is Matt Perry. I'm Chair of this board, and the board is the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'll call this meeting order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Here. Finlison?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Here.
Johansson? O'Geeba?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Softley?
Aye.
Thank you. That's eight members.
Okay, we have quorum, so we can proceed with our agenda. And a copy of this agenda was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System. Available, LIMS, L-I-M-S dot Minneapolis, M-N dot G-O-V. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? If you could type in your name, your last name, so I could recognize you to take your Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, but make a motion to accept.
There's a motion to accept the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Second.
Yes, but who is seconding it?
I think that's member Softley.
Mr. Softley?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Johansson, I see you in queue. Do you have any, do you have a comment? Or were you going to second?
I was going to second. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlison?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Softley?
Aye.
That's eight yeas. Thank you.
That motion passes, and we have an approved agenda. I believe all the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from our March 5, 2020 Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Hutchinson?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Hutchinson approves. Is there a second? Mr. Johansson?
As a second.
And Mr. Johansson seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call, vote on this. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Finlison?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
I will abstain since I missed the March meeting.
Thank you. Softley?
Aye.
Thank you. That's six out of eight.
All right. And I vote yes on approval of the actions as well. Petitions and communications. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, I guess there is, there's one communication I'd like to address. We will have a full complement of board members with the April 23 hearing. We will have to work on, it'll be kind of interesting being a new board member in a virtual environment, but we will do our best. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent, continuance, or discussion, and I'll talk a little bit about what these things are. Consent items are those items that will be passed without discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommendation found on the agenda under the item's recommended motion section. Importantly, any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including any applicable conditions, you need to do nothing, and the board will pass it as recommended. After the item is passed in consent, there's nothing much left to do. The project is approved. You can check in with a staff member assigned to that item if you have any questions following the decision, though. If you disagree with the recommendation, please indicate you'd like to speak to that item when we ask people who have called in whether they'd like to speak against the item, and we'll put it on the discussion agenda. Continuance or withdrawals. We have a continuance request, and these are items that will be held over until a future meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And if it's continued, I will be stating to what date the item is being recommended to be continued to. Discussion items, these are items that will, the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard from each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions, and for these land use requests, the chair only votes in the case of a time. So let's go through our land use requests. Agenda number five is 1955 Drew Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anybody in the queue to talk to this item? You're nodding yes, Rachel?
Sorry, we are working through that. So yes, I apologize if I mispronounced the name, but the applicant is in the queue, but they have said they don't need to speak if the item is on consent. It was, I apologize if I mispronounced the name, Zayed Nahas is in the queue, but again, said not, requested not to speak if it's on consent.
Okay. And that's it for, for people for that item?
Yes, that's the only person in the queue for item number five.
Agenda item number six is 2105 Irving Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone in the queue to speak against this item or for this item?
Only the applicant is in the queue to speak for this item, but again, only if it's not on consent.
Okay, agenda item number seven is 14. Agenda item number seven is 1445 35th Street West. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone in the queue to speak for or against this item?
No, there is no one in the queue to speak for this item.
You know, I have a question of staff on this item. So my question, who, who is the staff?
Hi. Leah.
Leah? So I'm looking at this, I looked at the practical difficulties of this item, and it seems like the thrust of the argument is simply that there's not enough space because of required yards to have the item and, and the distance between the accessory dwelling unit and the, and the primary dwelling unit. So because there isn't enough space, that's a practical difficulty, but those distances were put in place for a reason, and I think if we use that logic, basically, if I follow that logic, then an ADU could be put in at every property. So can you help me clarify what I'm missing there?
One of the issues, if you look at the site plan, is that the, the site itself, as compared to the neighbor, neighboring sites, is a little bit more shallow than the other, than the adjacent sites, and so we also viewed that as a practical difficulty, that they would have had more room if their, if their lot was the same depth as the neighboring lots.
Okay, so your logic is not one that could be applied to every property?
No.
Okay.
No, it was unique to the property.
Okay, thanks. That's the clarification I wanted. Thank you very much. Agenda number eight is 4129 Drew Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone in the queue to speak against this item or for it?
I'm just overlooking my list here. I have the applicant, Eric Yule, if I mispronounce that, is in the queue. I'm not clear if he wants to speak if it's for consent, and then also, and I apologize if I mispronounce his name, Ben Akahigabe is also in the queue and is not the applicant. I presume he is here because he wants to speak.
Hello?
So my question to either one of the people in the queue is, would you like to speak against this item?
Eric Yule, if you will press star six to unmute, make a comment, please, and state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Eric Yule.
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to speak on this item?
I do not wish to speak if the, if it is to be approved.
My question to either one of the people in the queue is, would you like to speak against this item? I couldn't really hear the last caller to tell whether they wanted to speak against this, but can anybody, did anybody else hear them?
I think actually what we heard was a feedback delay, but the other caller has not, is no longer on the call, so we're going to go ahead and proceed with the next item. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number nine is 5645 Dupont Avenue South. The applicant is asking this item be continued until our April 24 meeting, which is one cycle, and we can discuss this more when we review requested continuances. Agenda item number 10 is 1500 West 56th Street. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak in the queue or against this item?
There is no one in the queue for item number 10.
Okay. Agenda number, item 11 is 3201 46th Avenue South. This is a discussion item. Agenda number item 12 is 410 Fourth Street Northeast. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone in the queue to speak to this item?
Yes, we have, I believe, four people in the queue to speak to this item.
Would anybody, would anybody in the queue like to speak against this item?
We're working through pulling them in for discussion on our end. Hang on one moment.
Eric Gustafson is the applicant and said he want to speak. If you want to press star six to unmute and make a comment.
And Mr. Gustafson, when you, if the item, right now, this item is recommended for consent, so if it stays on the consent agenda, it will be approved as requested. If it doesn't, if someone does pull it, you will have the opportunity as the applicant to speak in more detail to it. I just want to know if you, who, if anybody wants to speak against it and have it pulled from the consent agenda.
Sorry, this is Eric Gustafson, the applicant. I had some technical difficulties.
Did you hear what I just said?
No, I'm afraid I didn't. I'm so sorry.
So I said, if it gets, it'll be, if it remains on the consent agenda, you need to do nothing. If someone else wants to pull it and it becomes a discussion item, you'll have ample time to speak to the item during public hearing.
Okay.
So is there anyone here who's on, who's in the queue who would like to speak against the item?
Barbara Sherwood, if you press star six to unmute and make a comment.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to speak against this item?
Yeah, I just have a few comments to make. I too was having computer problems where I couldn't connect to the internet, so I just wanted to read a couple of comments, and then one of the neighbors will like to voice her comments too, because she does not have computer access, but I think I would like to deny the variance existing.
Ma'am?
Yeah?
What we'll do is we'll pull the item from consent, and then we'll have a public hearing on it, and at that time, you and your neighbor can both comment on it.
Okay, I thought we, so.
So you don't do that.
We can't make comments, no.
Right, you don't do them yet? You do them, because this was originally recommended for consent. You're saying you'd like to speak against it, so we'll pull it from consent, and we'll do a full public hearing for, where you will be able to give your comments.
Okay, and then also, there were several other neighbors that did not get the confirmation ID and the phone number to dial into, so.
All right, you can have that as part of your comments. Thank you, and if you could put your, put them back on mute, star six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay with us, though. Agenda item number 13 is 500 Nicollet Mall, and this is a discussion item. I just want to know if you, if anybody wants to speak against it and have it pulled from
Yes, so the folks who are on the line to discuss, or who recommended, or pardon me, the folks who called in to say that they wanted to participate in the public hearing for item number 13, we, that item, Mr. Chair Perry has just said that we will have that one on discussion. We'll have a public hearing for that shortly, if you would just be willing to hang tight, and we'll let you know when that item is up for discussion. Thank you all.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Blanford, for that clarification. So what we'll do is go through the discussion items. We first have to go through our items for consent, and then we'll move on to the items that are discussion items. So let's review the items on the agenda for consent. They are five, six, seven, eight, and 10. Is there a motion to adopt these items on consent? Mr. Hutchins?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with staff findings on agenda items number five, six, seven, eight, and 10.
And Mr. Sandberg?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlison, if you're there, if you can press star six to unmute, please. Okay. Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Thank you. That's six yeas.
Okay, that motion passes. And so if you are here for agenda items number five, six, seven, eight, or 10, your land use requests are approved. Good luck with your projects. We have an item for continuance, request for continuance, and so we need to go through a little bit of a procedure for that. So those who are waiting for the discussion items, please be patient with us while we attend to this continuance item. It's agenda item number nine, 5645 Dupont Avenue South. The applicant is requesting this item be continued until April 23, 2020 Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, which is one cycle. And could staff give us a quick, quick update on why they're making this request?
Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board. This item is under request for continuance because the applicant has indicated that she would like to revise her plans and modify them in a way that could impact the analysis of the variance request, and so the request for continuance is to give staff more time to see the revised plans and conduct new analysis.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comments? My, my one question is, is one cycle enough to, for staff to do, both the applicant to get in the revisions and staff to review them, and then get the packet and information back out to us and to the public?
Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board. Based on my discussions at the time, I believe it was back on April 1st, that the applicant had indicated that she intended to revise her plans, and had indicated that she would be able to provide those revisions in a timely manner, but a specific date was not specified. So that's why we selected the next available hearing. So I cannot confirm that they will be ready by that date, but I believe it's enough time.
Okay. So as I said, there's a little bit of procedure to this. Is there anyone in queue who would like to speak in favor of continuing this item? Ms. Blanford?
Just the applicant is in the queue, Ms. Vicky Olson.
Maybe I can ask her, it's Olson?
My apologies, Chair Perry. Oh, she was in the queue earlier, but she doesn't appear to be at this time.
Okay. So is there, is there anybody, there's nobody in the queue at all to speak?
Not for item nine, no.
Okay. Is there any further board comment on this item? So is there a motion to continue the land use application for 5645 Dupont Avenue South to our April 23, 2020 meeting? Mr. Hutchins?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue to the April 23 meeting.
Thank you. And Ms. Cooper?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlison?
Aye.
Star six unmute. Oh, there you are, thank you. Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
That's seven yea. Thank you.
That motion passes, and the land use application for 5645 Dupont Avenue South will be continued one cycle to the April 23, 2020 Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. And so with that, we'll move on to our discussion items. And our first one is number 11, which is 3201 46th Avenue South.
Good evening, Chair Perry, members of the board. The application before you is 3201 46th Avenue South, which is a corner lot in the Cooper neighborhood, near the river and the northern campus of Minnehaha Academy. It was approved for construction on June 27, 2018. However, they did not submit their required top foundation permit until April 3, 2019, after they had finished framing the house. Unfortunately, it was discovered that the elevation of the finished first floor was 1.7 feet higher than had been approved, and as such, the basement of the house was now included in the calculation for the floor area ratio, which caused the building to exceed the maximum by 779 square feet. If I could move on to the second page of the PDF here, we have on the left-hand side the original approved site plan, and on the right-hand side, the top of foundation survey that they submitted. If you look closely at the numbers, you can see where what they had proposed at the original elevation of the first floor ended up being the height to which they built the foundation of the house, which then bumped everything up once you installed the floor system and the flooring itself. So their request is to allow the construction to remain results in a floor area ratio of 0.66, which exceeds the maximum. For this lot particularly, the maximum is 2,500 square feet of gross floor area, and that's due to the way that gross floor area is calculated for lots that are less than 5,000 square feet. I see if you could move on to this, the next slide. So in terms of the practical difficulties, staff finds that practical difficulties do not exist on this site that would make it difficult to prevent compliance with the floor area ratio requirement. Yes, the lot is substandard, but as I mentioned before, substandard lots are still allowed, 2,500 square feet of gross floor area building. The lot is very flat by Minneapolis standards. A lot of times when we get requests for floor area ratio that relate to basement exposure, it's, it's due to some, some manner of grade on the site. That's not the case. For this lot, there's just over a foot of total elevation change over the entirety of the lot. So staff finds that there are not unique circumstances, that the request is based on economic considerations due to construction error. With regards to the second finding, staff finds that the request is not in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is to regulate the size of buildings, especially as they appear from the public right-of-way. Given that this house is on a highly visible corner, it does have a significant visual impact. It appears to be much larger than would be allowed. The proposal, however, does meet the guidance of the comprehensive plan as outlined in that table. meet the guidance of the comprehensive plan as outlined in that table. With regards to finding number three, the request is not in keeping with the essential character of the locality. As mentioned, it looks substantially larger than houses in the area. If we could move on to the next slide, please. You can see is a comparison of, the line in red is approximately where the finished first floor is based on images taken from Google Street View. And on the right-hand side, you can see the adjacent house, and I don't know if it shows up particularly well here, but there's a dashed red line that shows the FFE of that adjacent house, and how much taller and how significantly farther out of the ground the subject house sits. However, staff does find that the request does not present a detriment to health, safety, or welfare. So given that none of the three findings have been met, staff recommends denial of the variance, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Sandberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. Brandt. My understanding is that the variance does not include height or bulk dimensions, or distance to lot lines, but is only related to the level of the first floor. I guess my question is, if the basement had been dug 20 inches deeper, 1.7 feet deeper, and the first floor was lowered with a higher ceiling, would that structure still be permitted?
If I can interrupt, this is the clerk Rachel. Mr. Stock, Board Member Sandberg, would you be willing to turn on your camera while you're speaking, please?
Oh, of course. Here I am.
Thank you Chair Perry, Board Member Sandberg. The relationship between the finished first floor elevation and the bulk of the building, they're functionally the same thing. So due to the elevation of the first floor, that causes the basement to be included in the FAR gross floor area measurement. As originally proposed, the house was lower into the ground, if you will. I'm not sure if the ceiling height of the basement changed. Ultimately, the ceiling height of the basement doesn't factor in to how we calculate gross floor area. It's strictly related to the height of the finished first floor. And the second part of your question is correct, there are no height or setback variances requested.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
So, the, is staff, staff is recommending denial, and that would mean tearing down the house, or just sort of digging the basement deeper and lowering the finished floor to meet the rest of the neighborhood, or, I didn't know if that was included about exactly what staff is requiring, or hoping to require, if it were actually denied?
Thank you Chair Perry, Board Member Cooper. In the case of denial, the house could be lifted off of the foundation, and then you can cut down the foundation block and basically set the house back down on the foundation to bring it back to what it was originally approved at.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just note, Ms. Cooper, that we have had an instance, while I have been on this body, where we did in fact deny a request for this very reason. And what Ms. Brandt said was what the property owner ended up doing.
Got it.
Are there any other questions of staff? I see none. Thank you Ms. Brandt. Is, so let's open up the public hearing. I understand we have three people in, and the way it works is we take the people who are speaking for the application first, and then people who are speaking against the application after that. So the applicant, I understand the applicant is online and would like to speak.
What's her name?
David Epstein is the applicant, and we'll get him in here shortly. Thank you.
David Epstein, if you could press star six to unmute?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Could you give your name and address for the record?
You know, I'm watching this also, and there's really a delay, so it's very concerning, but it's David Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, before you continue, I would ask that if you have this meeting on speaker on TVs or something, because it is delayed and we're hearing it over your conversation, please turn off any device you have playing while you're speaking. Thank you.
Okay, you can't hear it now. I turned it down. Hopefully you won't hear it.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, this is David Epstein. You have my name. And, you know, we're talking about just one foot. And, you know, a variance is simply an exception, and we're just asking for a simple exception. We believe that the city issued several permits after it should have been flagged, and basically all the permits allowed the shell of the house to be built, all the mechanicals to be built, and we basically have an entirely framed house. That there's no good way to lower a foot without deconstructing the entire house, or taking the basement from an eight-foot level to a six-foot level, or suspending the house and redoing the entire foundation, which is really a problem since the house has already been built. Had we known about this the way we feel we should have, it would have been a much easier, excuse me, a much easier problem to correct. Unfortunately now, you know, in the time of pandemic, I can't even come to a meeting and state this case in person. So I feel at a huge disadvantage because staff has been against any solution that I've been, that anything I've come up to potentially solve this without deconstructing the entire house. I've just been met with a series of no's, and I believe that the city really needs to have a sequence of how these are permitted so that this isn't allowed to happen. I think we should have been notified far sooner than the entire framing the house. So if you read my narrative, from five to 11 permits were issued and approved, no one ever flagged the top of block or first floor elevation until then. We've been at standstill for over a year, and really all we did was set out to renovate a substandard house, and because the house was so substandard, turned into a new build project. The house is on the end of the block, and I believe a new house is going to be bigger than the existing houses, and that's just the way it generally is. And since across the street is Minnehaha Academy in an open area, I don't think the house blocks anybody's light, or creates an eyesore, or creates any problems. So we believe strongly that the variance request is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the code. The, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The practical difficulty is the existing elevated grade utility connections. It, you know, a contractor who properly installed the foundation 20 inches higher than approved. The single-family residence stays with the allowed uses in the zoning classification, and we don't believe the variance request for simply one foot will allow the works or the essential characters of the surrounding area at all. So that's my belief, and I would respectfully ask that the board consider seriously this request so we can actually get a house completed and have another livable unit in the city, rather than have to have this suspended and deconstructed and reconstructed, which is going to take an enormous amount of time and effort, especially now that there's really not even freedom of movement. Thank you very much.
Thanks for, thanks for your testimony. Are there any questions of the applicant?
No. The next speaker. The next speaker in queue is Craig Zeiss. Craig Zeiss, if you are on mute, press star six and make your comment now.
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. So my wife and I live in and own the home directly to the south of this property. So I hope you will consider our comments here.
Yes, and if you'd be willing to just, I know we announced you, but if you'd be willing to state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Sorry about that. Craig Zeissi, 3205 46th Avenue South in Minneapolis.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, so it is our understanding that the contractor responsible for the building mistakes may no longer be involved with this project. It sort of seems like the ownership wants you to consider the mistakes made by previous contractors that they have hired as part of the problem and a reason that they should be allowed to continue with this project as is. We would like you to kind of remember that the current ownership has not changed, and they are ultimately responsible for the work of their contractors. So we are in agreement with all of the staff reports, recommendations, in particular, in regards to the practical difficulties and unique circumstances, the kind of willful ignorance to the requirement of submitting the top of foundation survey before continuing with construction of the house. That kind of seemed to be pretty ridiculous to us and should definitely be considered. Yeah, and in regards to keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and altering the essential character of the locality, we would like to note that the current structure towers over our two-story home. Going forward, we are hopeful that the owners of the property and their contractors would put more effort into building the house within the guidelines set forth by the city, and ideally in a timely manner. We hope that the city will closely monitor this project as it has been ongoing for three years now. Personally, we've been attempting to install a fence in our backyard for the past two years and have not been able to, due to the demolition that they completed in June 2018, cutting into our property land a little bit. We also hope that they will make an effort to complete the project responsibly, taking into consideration the protection of our property as they build. We haven't really seen any evidence of this so far, nor have we ever been notified of any major work to be done before it occurred, including the demolition of the original house. Thank you for your time and considering our comments.
Thank you, sir. Who is the next caller?
The next speaker registered is Jeff Martinson.
Martin, Mr. Martinson? Could you hold for a minute? There's a question that, of staff from one of the board members. Mr. Hutchins?
Thank you Chair Perry. So the question goes out to the city. The height of the existing structure as it sits right now, if we were to grant the variance, do they need to get a variance for the height of their existing structure, or is it still within the height allowed? Because the, the public comment just brought up that towers over their house, would it be illegal for them to leave that height, but lower the first floor somehow? Not from a practicality standpoint, but from a legal standpoint?
Thank you Chair Perry, Board Member Hutchins. I don't have the exact numbers to hand, but the height of the roof is, is not a matter of question. Both the midpoint and the peak of the roof are under the required, or required height.
Okay, thank you. So even, even if we deny the variance and they lower the basement so, and the first floor elevation to get it within the legal height, so you don't include the square footage total, they could still build their roof exactly as tall as it is now, and it would not need a variance, correct?
Correct.
That's how I understand it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Martinson. If you want to proceed, please.
Oh shit.
Yeah. Hello, this is Jeff Martinson. I'm the consulting contractor with the owner, David Epstein and his group. I am aware of the situation from the onset. Apologize for the delay of the construction to Mr. Craig Zeiss, the neighbor, who I will introduce myself to when I have an opportunity onsite there. Comments I would make would be that kitty corner directly to the northwest, that house, when compared to the house of 3201, would have actually be existing a little higher. However, it was constructed some time ago, back in 1911, at a much higher elevation that does not conform to the current codes and ordinances that the city currently has. And it would be less than the height of that particular home. So when considering, you know, the neighborhood and the surrounding homes, that would be a comparable home that I would say falls at a point that's higher, with a higher far and a higher roof peak line from top of block and/or top of roof line on any survey that would be compared to the existing subject property of 3201. So that's my first comment. Second comment would be, and I haven't had a chance to run this up the flagpole with anybody yet, but, and this is a staff question, I guess, is what would be the possibility of modifying the existing structure at its current heights and elevations into a multifamily, two-unit duplex, and just changing simply the structure, entry points, and egress points? Is that, is that a possibility that we can look at without having to lift the house, excavate the existing foundation, and lower the grade in the basement, along with all the utilities depth, to be able to leave it as is and just simply modify the existing structure? And with that, I conclude, and I thank everybody for, for taking the time to listen.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Ms. Brandt, do you want to maybe answer that question?
Thank you Chair Perry. With regards to the question about whether adding additional units would sort of solve this issue, single-family homes, two-family homes, and three-family homes are all subject to the same set of regulations. So if this, you know, were to come in as a two-family dwelling, we would still have the same set of floor area ratio and finished first floor elevation requirements. So no, it would not solve the issue.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other callers in queue?
No, that's everyone. Thank you Chair Perry.
All right, let's close the public hearing. Board comment? Is there any board comment?
This is Board Member Hutchins.
Yes, sir. And then Mr. Sandberg?
So, when it comes to the practical difficulty of the house, I do find there is a little bit of a practical difficulty there to jack up the house and to excavate the existing foundation. Not to say that it couldn't be done, but from an economic standpoint and from a practicality and timeline standpoint, I can see that being a practical difficulty. I'd like to hear what the other board members have to say about it, but that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Before you proceed, Mr. Sandberg, I'll just say, Mr. Hutchins, that the board has, as I mentioned to Ms. Cooper, the board has denied a request similar to this in the past, and the property owner did lift the house up and remove some levels of block, and the ceiling of the, the height of the cellar or the basement was not as high, but they, that was the result. It can be done, and our rulings have to not take into, solely into consideration, economic considerations. Mr. Sandberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I interrupt you really quick? I'm so sorry. I see a staff in queue to clarify a comment about Mr. Hutchins' comment, and it might be interesting for the board to take that first.
Yes, sure. Sorry.
Thank you, Chair Perry. You sort of addressed on what I was going to say, but I did want to clarify that in addition to not considering economic factors, the practical difficulty by state statute cannot have been created by the applicant.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Sandberg?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I can come up with findings different from what staff found, but I do have a few comments on this particular situation that might be mitigating circumstances if we could find findings that would make me feel better about it. One is that it's on the north side of a block, and it's not creating shading essentially on the adjacent house. After hearing from that neighbor, though, I understand that that neighbor feels that the house is too close, but as we heard, and I think we agreed, that the bulk of the house is not at odds here. It's just the position of the first floor and the basement floor, and the height of the house and the distance to the lot lines and so forth are conforming. The other thing I guess also brought up by the neighbor, but I think could be a problem for the neighbor, is another extended period of construction, and maybe this neighbor and other neighbors, by doing the change, by lifting the house and either re-excavating or removing blocks. So I think that would, just removing blocks would make the entire lower level unusable, bringing the height down to maybe a seven-foot ceiling, which would be, you know, not usable as living space essentially. So I guess I don't have any problems with staff findings, but if we were to consider other circumstances, it might be the fact that it is on the north side of a block. It's across the street from a large open area. So it is affecting the neighborhood, the neighbors, less than it might otherwise.
Thanks for those comments. Mr. Johansson and then Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry. I know this area. I've seen this. It does stand out. I strongly support staff findings. A little bit of construction to remedy the situation will relieve a lot of tension for the neighbors and the neighborhood as a whole. So I support staff findings.
Thanks for those comments. Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Ms. Brandt took my comment and articulated it wonderfully. I support staff findings.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Softly. Is there anybody else who'd like to, on the board, who'd like to speak? Mr. O'Gibbe?
Thank you, Chair Perry. Essentially looking at this, the only difficulty that seems to have been presented to us was a contractor error. And a foot is not a small amount when building a basement foundation to be an air. We're not talking about an inch off or a small amount of distance here. I realize that as you add this around the entire perimeter of the space, that it does dramatically affect the house as a whole and its appearance. So agreeing with my fellow board members, Johansson and Softly, and supporting staff findings.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. O'Gibbe. Mr. Johansson, you'd like to comment again?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot something. I think, I'd hate to, I don't want to reward someone's mistake with making something that doesn't conform and yet is much more marketable. And so I think it's, we got to support staff findings. Thank you for letting me say again.
Sure. Thanks for those comments. Does anyone else like to comment on this from the board?
Yes, Chair Perry. John Finlessen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I support staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Is there a motion? Mr. Softly?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I move to deny the application on the strength of staff comment.
Mr. Sandberg?
I will second that motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the item? On the motion, rather? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
No.
Finlessen?
Aye.
Hutchins?
No.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Gibbe?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Softly?
Aye.
So I have five yea, two nay.
What was that again? Please, Ms. Blandford?
I'm sorry, we had some discussion back here. What was your question, Chair Perry?
What was the count again?
The count was five in favor of the motion and two against the motion, as I understood it.
Okay. So that motion passes, and with that, the request is denied. The applicant can talk to staff to see what their options are moving forward. Let's move on to agenda item number 12, which is 410 Fourth Street Northeast.
Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board, and thank you to IT. Could we actually start on the second slide of the set that I provided? Start talking a little bit about the project. So this is a variance request to reduce the required interior side yard on the northwest side from six feet to 5.85 feet for construction of a new single-family dwelling on the existing foundation. The picture you can see here is the existing house. It's a one-story, single-family dwelling, which was originally constructed in 1967. And the lot is 44 feet wide. Can we continue to the next slide, please? This is another photo provided by the applicant, taken from the rear yard of the subject property. And the house on the right is the house in question. The fence that you see here runs right along the property line, and you can see that the house is relatively close to that property line, and it's again located 5.85 feet. Can we continue to the next slide, please? And this is again an applicant provided by the survey, and I'm calling out that existing setback requirement. Again, the request in this case is to demolish that existing dwelling and construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling using the existing foundation. Could we continue to the next slide, please? And so here you can see a concept drawing showing the design of that proposed structure as well as the proposed site plan, which looks similar to the, which looks similar to the existing site plan. Only changes are a front porch and a rear porch or deck that would be added. But otherwise, the footprint of the structure is the same as what is there now. Again, the existing house is non-conforming to that northwest side setback, and the applicants are requesting a variance to reduce that for construction of the new dwelling on the existing foundation. I'll transition to talking about the findings. The first finding, required finding regarding practical difficulties due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the applicant, staff finds that this is met. The property was platted and developed as a single-family dwelling in compliance with all applicable zoning regulations at the time of its construction. And this included the, and this is prior to the city's current zoning ordinance, which includes an increased setback requirement of six feet in this case. These conditions were not created by the applicant and are not economic in nature. The second required finding regarding the reasonable use of the property in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the comprehensive plan, staff finds that this is met as well. The spirit and intent of the ordinance regarding required yards is to promote orderly development and ensure access to light air and open space and provide separation between uses and structures. And in this case, it is a graduated setback requirement resulting in a six-foot requirement. And the spirit and intent of those ordinances are specifically to promote rear yards as a primary open space on a property. And under the presumption of larger structures being built on a larger property to require larger setbacks for those structures, the proposed design that's been provided by the applicant is not substantially larger than what we would expect to see on a smaller or average-sized residential property, even though this is a little bit larger. And we can actually stay on this slide. It's okay. The general use of the property as a single-family dwelling would not change as part of this project. And the rear yard would remain the primary outdoor space on the property. Furthermore, existing single-family dwellings, which are non-conforming to minimum side setbacks like this property, are generally allowed to keep and maintain those setbacks, even if there are additions to the structure, as long as they are at least three feet away from the property line in question. And they're not, they wouldn't be increasing the non-conformity. And the proposed project in this case meets the spirit and intent of those provisions as well. For the third required finding regarding the essential character of the locality or the potential for impact on the general neighborhood or nearby properties, staff finds that this is met as well. Again, the general use of the property as a single-family dwelling would not change as part of this project. And the proposed setback on the northwest side, which is non-conforming, would match that of the existing structure. And this is sufficient for compliance with building code requirements that would apply for separation of structures in this case. Finally, other dwellings in the area appear to have similar non-conformities to their minimum interior side yard setbacks, including the houses directly adjacent to this property on either side. So this situation is not unusual, and this would not be unusual for the immediate area. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the requested variance, again, to reduce the required minimum interior side yard on the northwest side from six feet to 5.85 feet for construction of the new single-family dwelling on the existing foundation, subject to conditions that are listed in the staff report. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Callas, for your presentation. Are there questions from the board? Of staff? I have a question, and it may be more of a comment. One of the things that seems to have evolved with the city is how city staff treats whether it's a practical difficulty when something has been raised and the foundation remains about, and the practical difficulty includes, you know, moving the foundation. And what I'm wondering is why the code doesn't take into account that that is a practical difficulty in itself to move a foundation when you're building straight up from the foundation?
Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board. I think in this case, it's, again, based on the age of that structure and the fact that it was constructed before the current zoning regulation, the increased setback requirement for for six feet. And the proposal to demolish the house is, again, different than if they were just doing an addition to the existing structure, for example, a rear addition, or a second-story addition, which would both be permitted to maintain that existing non-conforming setback as opposed to a total wrecking of all of the structures, including the foundation, because it is not as extreme of a demolition than I think has informed staff thinking in this case.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I don't see any questions of staff, so let's open the public hearing. If we could get Mr. Gustafson on the line first? The applicant?
That's what we're working on. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Perry and zoning board members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Eric Gustafson. My wife, Kamara, and I are longtime Minneapolis residents who work in public policy and public health. We moved to the neighborhood a few years ago to be close to our aging parents and our jobs to raise a family and to establish a home for our growing family to live in long into the future. We love the people and small businesses and street life in this neighborhood, its public schools and its parks and this amazing stretch of the Mississippi River. We purchased this property as-is from a large group of descendants of the original owner. We plan to replace a modest one-story, single-family home with a modest two-story, single-family home. As our new next-door neighbor to the south pointed out in his supportive April 6th email to city staff, we have taken our time to determine how best to utilize the existing footprint and foundation and to determine how much of the existing structure we can feasibly utilize to create a resilient and efficient home that blends into the scale, form, and diversity of the established block. Our project team includes an architect who works in the neighborhood and a small, family-owned builder. We've hired Better Futures to deconstruct by hand the remaining structure with the goal of recycling as much as possible and minimizing the disruption to the neighborhood. In closing, we are grateful our local and state governments are supporting the livelihoods of our project team during this peacetime emergency. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Is there any, does the board have any questions to the applicant? I see none. I understand there's two more callers in the queue. If they could come in order, whatever order they.
The next speaker registered is Barbara Sherwood. Barbara Sherwood?
Yes.
If you press star six to unmute.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Yes, I was just wanting to put my comments in because I lost my internet connection, so I couldn't get my comments to Alex. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there were several other neighbors that wanted to get their comments in, but they never got a confirmation or telephone number, so I don't know how you want to handle that. But I will go ahead with my few little comments. And I had mentioned earlier that I wanted to deny the variance. I'm saying that if the existing foundation violates the setback at six feet, then it should be six feet. Codes are codes, but only some people have to follow them. And the mayor sent an affordable housing agenda out, which one item was preserving existing affordable housing. So how is tearing down a nice good house in the spirit and intent of that plan? Also, if the spirit and intent of their ordinance is to ensure access to light and air, how is putting up a two-and-a-half-story house not alter the use and enjoyment of the neighbors? Especially the neighbor to the north, who will be losing light and trees and the enjoyment of the side yard. Also, just for the record, the house was built in 67, 1964, as Eric stated. He also mentioned, I wasn't sure what he meant by the proposed project bringing the house up to existing codes for the safety of the family. The house is, or what's left of it, was up to code. And also, it's nice to know that the Gustafsons will be getting the tax deduction for destroying the house. And one more thing, word on the street is that there was no permit for the demo. The demo started on March 30th, and as of 31st, there was no permit. Status days later was told that the application was made, but somebody forgot to pay for it, and the city is still awaiting payment. That's why there's no posting, the permit is not posted on the house. Just wondering if somebody can check into that. And then also, if the Gustafson wanted a bigger house, they should have. And then also, if the Gustafson wanted a bigger house, they should have bought a bigger house. It's just a shame and sad that they had to destroy something that was affordable to somebody else, but they wanted a bigger house. And then I have a neighbor that has no internet access, so she would like to give her comments. And then also, can you let us know what the other two people are supposed to do about their comments?
So what could happen? We're having a public hearing right now, ma'am. And once the public hearing is closed, we would not be taking any more public comment on this item. They could file an appeal, depending upon the outcome of this decision. So that's one way to move the process along, where you would provide additional comments by doing an appeal. Another is you could ask, and I can ask the board if they want to continue this item to a later date when they can get call-in information.
Well, that would be good, because, I mean, with the pandemic going on, they called to take and register for the call-in, and then they didn't get any telephone number or ID number to take and call back in, so I think that would be...
So the continuance of an item is something that the board would have to decide, and I could ask for that right now. And I will. So let me just see if there is any appetite by the board to continue the item until a future meeting of the zoning board. Is there anybody on the board who would like to continue this item? We can determine the date if there's someone who would like to continue it.
Well, could we have this other neighbor give her comments before you go through it?
I'd rather, you can't comment twice.
I'm not. It's a neighbor that doesn't have access.
Right, but if the item is continued, then they would, their comments today would have to be for today only. They couldn't comment at the future meeting. So first, I'd like to see if anybody on the board would like to make a motion to continue this item. I see no one making a motion, so that option doesn't look like that's something that can be done. So I think your neighbor can make their comments now, and as I said, one way to make comments on this is to appeal the decision if it does not go the way that you would Do you want to hand the phone over to your neighbor? Yes, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, this is Mabel Huber at 412 Fourth Street Northeast.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm directly impacted by what happens when they build a two-and-a-half-story house that close to my property. And the impact I'm going to feel the most will be the fact that I have six full-size windows on the south of my house. And one of the nice features of the home is the fact that it adds very, very nice natural light, which would be gone if there's a two-and-a-half-story house that close. Also, it's going to influence rosebuds, iris buds that won't get the right amount of sun. It influences a tree that's close to the property line. So I'm not too excited about having a two-and-a-half-story house built at 410. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I'll just note that the question of the height is not under consideration here. They are building it to a height that they have the ability to do by right of ordinance. I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate you giving your testimony, but I'll just say, regardless of where the house was built, the height of the structure is being done by right. They have that legal right to build it that high.
Yeah, I know. It's just not positive for me.
Yes, I understand that. So thanks for your testimony.
Okay. We just got another quick question. The neighbors were wondering, the emails that were sent to Alex, are the comments going to be made to the board with those?
Any comments that were sent to Alex would be in the packets that are either online or information that we received today. So we did receive some supplemental information today, and we, so we've gotten all the comments that Alex would have gotten. Okay, with nobody left in the queue to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board comment?
No.
Thank you.
There is one more speaker registered, Joe Mersch. Joe Mersch, if you press star six to unmute.
I apologize.
Joe Mersch, if you press star six to unmute, and then turn down the video in the background.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Joe Mersch. I am the builder for the Gustafsons on this project. Just wanted to comment on the process of our demo permits that was done in a timely manner, and the permit was pulled before we started deconstruction. We have the check cleared and everything. We went through the process that we were required to do, so I want to comment on that. Otherwise, I don't really have any other comments unless any of the board has questions for me. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your testimony, sir. With that, I will close the public hearing. If there is no comment, oh, Mr. Johansson, and then Mr. Sandberg.
Thanks, Chair Perry. I just wanted to know, I support staff findings. If we really look at this, .15 feet is really 1.8 inches. I just want to clarify that. And I feel like, from what it looks like, it'd actually be an asset to the community. I know the neighbors feel differently, but there are much larger homes around. They could have built a larger home, and they're sticking to the existing foundation. So I support the staff on this one. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Johansson. Mr. Sandberg?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I agree with Mr. Johansson's comments. It's only 1.8 inches, and the bulk of the house is not in discussion, that to move the same house 1.8 inches away would make very little difference to the neighbors. So I would support staff recommendation.
Thank you, thanks for that comment. Any other board comment? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Ogiba?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I'd like to make a motion to move staff findings.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlessen?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Ogiba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Softley?
Aye.
That's seven yays, thank you.
That motion passes to the applicant. Good luck with your project. For those who called in to speak against, as I said, you can talk to staff about what your options are regarding things like an appeal. And let's move on to the last item today to hear. So if we have people who have been in the queue waiting, thank you very much for waiting as long as you have. It's 500 Nicollet Mall, and I think we have Mr. Liska to present.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, everyone. Again, this variance request is located at 500 Nicollet Mall. It may be familiar to some of you. A similar request was made here several months ago. The applicant is seeking to vary the Nicollet Mall overlay district standards regarding ground floor uses. Code requires that 60% of the gross floor area be food, beverage use, retail sales, and services. The applicant, instead of meeting that 60%, is seeking a variance to reduce that 60 to The frontage along Nicollet Mall is also required to be 60%. The applicant is proposing this number to be 43%. This site is located, obviously, on Nicollet Mall and Fifth Street. On Fifth Street there, there is a single lane of automobile traffic, but that is the light rail line as well. When issuing a variance, several findings must be met. The first, this building was constructed in 1898. It is one of the oldest buildings on Nicollet Mall. With that, it does lack a loading dock. The lack of a loading dock and proximity on Nicollet Mall and on Fifth Street does present a practical difficulty in meeting some of the uses that require greater loading, such as those food and beverage uses. Again, that in and of itself is a practical difficulty as far as attracting those food and beverage uses, although those uses are not the only uses that would be permitted here in this location. Next, the intent of the Nicollet Mall standards is to create and maintain a vibrant, active use along one of the city's most important corridors. Policymakers have determined that retail sales and services, food and beverage uses make up that desired atmosphere. A large office use, the lobby, those are not keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Last, the proposed variance could alter the essential character of the area. Granting the variance could result in street-level uses along Nicollet Mall that lack that vibrancy, activity, foot traffic, everything that the Nicollet Mall overlay is striving towards. If the variance request is granted, this would not be detrimental to the health, safety, wellness of the general public. With that, staff recommends denial of this variance. I'll be here for questions, and the applicant, I believe, is also on the line.
All right, thank you, Mr. Liska, for the presentation. Before we get into questions from the board, can you help me, remind me why we've seen this before and why we're seeing it again?
It originally came, the applicant did not have any tenants in mind, so they were seeking to go from 60% to 0%. With that, since they're now seeking from 60 to 32% of the GFA and from 60 to 43%, this is a different application, so staff is able to accept that.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have questions of staff? Mr. Johansson?
Thanks, Chair Perry. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Liska. I just want to see, the last time this was brought up, was this appealed and taken to another level, or was our decision the final, say, in the previous variance?
It was appealed, but the appeal was withdrawn before additional bodies made any decisions.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your information.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. I understand we have a few speakers in queue, including the applicant, Mr. Katz. I'd like to see if we could get Mr. Katz on first.
Stephen Katz, if you could press star six to unmute and make your comment, and turn down the video in the background?
This is Mr. Katz. I don't, how would I turn on video in the background? I didn't know that was an option.
It's just, we don't want to hear the, if you're listening to it on the video, we have to turn it down so it doesn't create echo.
I turned on the audio from the video. So can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Chairman Perry, members of the board, thanks for taking the time today. I know it's gotta be challenging for you all, given the current circumstances. I'll jump right into it, and what I want to start with is a brief history. You touched on the fact that we were before the board before, but let me just start with the fact that my client, Renaissance Square Owner LLC, is a joint venture. They acquired the property back in 2017, and shortly after acquiring it, they embarked upon a major renovation, which included the lobby spaces, and did extensive work on the window lines, and the list goes on and on. As Mr. Liska brought up, this is, and by the way, before I hop to that, there are a number of before-and-after photos that are available that I uploaded onto the website. But as Mr. Liska brought up, this is one of the oldest buildings on Nicollet Mall, and what my clients found out short, you know, after doing this major renovation and putting it out to lease, is that there were a number of unique impediments that were caused by the way, the configuration of this building, and I'll go into that a little bit. The columns are particularly large and placed in such a way that it's difficult to chop up the space for uses, for retail uses and restaurant uses in particular. There is also, this happens to be a particularly deep building. Most buildings on Nicollet Mall are shallower, and as a result, it's easier to meet the 60% rule that is required by the overlay district, and as Mr. Liska also spoke about. So that was, there were also a number of other factors that was brought up. There's no loading dock. There is, it's difficult, if not impossible, to have any type of valet service, so that wouldn't work well with a restaurant, as Mr. Liska brought up as well. There's some access issues, and this corner is not an easy corner, as mentioned in the materials that I distributed. This corner has sat vacant for 15 years, and it's been a true challenge, leasing. In fact, my client engaged two different brokers to try and lease this space, one local and one national, trying, pulling out all stops. And that brings us to when we came to you the last time around. So when we were getting no traction with restaurants or retailers, we came to you back last August and came to the board with our, really to ask the question, how can you help us? We are having incredible challenges. Leasing, we were thinking of possibly expanding the... Leasing, we were thinking of possibly expanding the pool of potential tenants to include co-working users or other active uses on the mall that may not fit neatly within the definition of retailer or service. So we, we sat and we listened and we presented, and that kind of gets to, I mean, I guess you could go to the third slide if you want, that, or maybe it's the fourth, that, that talks about our lead, we took your lead, basically. And I don't know if you can put that up on the screen or whether the members of the board have it handy to look at, but.
We're, I'm sorry for interrupting. We're putting your presentation, your, I don't know if it's a PowerPoint or what it is, but we're putting it up on, on display so that all the board members and people watching on TV or over the internet can see it.
Oh, fantastic. I appreciate that. I should have started with that. That's, I apologize.
So there was a particular slide you wanted to, to have us look at?
Yeah, and I mean, I touched on, really, the first is just an introduction slide. I covered the background, which is the second slide. The third slide just lays out the 60% rule, which I mentioned is, is particularly challenging, challenging and uniquely challenging for, for this building, DeAndres. And now I'd like to go to the fourth slide, if you, if you can.
Can we move to the fourth slide, folks?
We're, we're working on it back here. Thank you for your patience.
Sure.
Okay, I think we're on it.
Okay. So there's a delay, as somebody else mentioned, so I don't, I don't see it as I look at the screen, but what, so as I mentioned, we applied to the board back in, in August of 2019. We considered appeal, but we decided, we, we decided to put it, file a paperwork, but withdraw because we sat and listened to everything the board had to say about the importance, which we knew before, but we thought we, we were going to, before appealing, we were going to redouble our efforts and see if we could, and push on our brokers and really explore every avenue possible. And we, with, with your guidance, we were fortunate, truly fortunate, in this difficult leasing market along Nicollet Mall and really retail throughout downtown is, is a particular challenge. But we've been fortunate to bring two vibrant uses to this difficult corner that's been vacant for well over a decade. The first one, which is not really the subject of this discussion, but it's important to know, and I think there's some synergies, is the first one is a new retail concept that's akin to an urban grocery store. It's an essential use under the, I bring that up just because of the, the unfortunate circumstances we're in with COVID-19, but it will bring some essential products to a corner that's been dead. The other use, which is, which is next to the corner, between the corner and the lobby, is an innovation center that would be, it's, it's, an innovation center that would be for XL Energy, and the thought would be for XL to use this space for brainstorming and a number of other uses. And I'm going to let somebody else who's in queue talk a little bit about XL's use, but I think it's important to note that this isn't just an average office use. I think that it is more in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the overlay district. I, I also wanted to point out that the, when we first came to you last August, we had the support, I mean, we went in and we met with the neighborhood, the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association, and they were empathetic to our, our efforts to maybe open the pool of uses, as I had discussed or mentioned before. However, they, they did not, there was no up or down vote. They just, they, it was kind of a stalemate. And so then, since that, with our new uses, we recently went back and we have full support of the, of the Neighborhood Association, which I've also included within our materials. So, for everybody to see. We, you know, maybe what I, before I close out and take questions, it may, what I'd like to do is have David Serrano, who's with RSB Architects, talk a little bit about XL's use, and then if it works for the board, then I will make a quick closing statement and we can open things up.
To keep things, especially given this format, to keep things, the regular process, to keep things going smoothly and streamlined, we have each person speak, then be asked questions, and then the next speaker come on. So while I appreciate your desire to want to give a closing statement, I think you'll have to do that as part of your testimony right now, and board members then ask you questions.
Sure. So I will, I'm going to have David speak when the time comes after I'm finished, or I, I believe he's in queue. But I will skip to my, I'll skip to my clothing, closing thoughts. I think that these new tenants are going to bring a true energy and activation to this corner. As I mentioned, it's really, it's been lifeless and dead for well over a decade. I've worked downtown. I've walked by this corner. I used to go to Hamlin's in this building, as well as, I think there was a cigar shop in there, and I remember going there when I first moved here. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful historic building, but it's a, it's a difficult project in today's climate to lease there. And I, I believe when David speaks about the tenants' use in addition, that, that there'll be a number of synergies with the, with the corner grocer. I think that there will be greater pedestrian traffic that's brought by both tenants, a lot greater than there is now where there is none, and that, along with that, comes As I mentioned before, we have the full support of the Neighborhood Association, which is, is different, and, and then, I mean, which is different than before, and I, that's a, I think that's an important fact to consider. And, and lastly, I'd say that, you know, Nicollet Mall has been a challenge, as we all know. There's been challenges up and down the mall in terms of leasing and closings of restaurants and others. Frankly, with, with the uncertain times that we're faced with COVID-19, I think it's sadly going to get worse, and I think that the mall is truly in need, as a, as a Minneapolis resident and a downtown worker, I'd say personally, and I think for the vibrancy of downtown, that the mall's really in need of a good story, and I hope that you will take all of that into consideration when, when, and vote in favor of us and overturn the recommendation of staff.
All right. Thanks for the testimony. Are there questions of Mr. Katz? From the board? I see none.
The next speaker is David Serrano. David Serrano, if you want to press star six to unmute and make your comment.
Mr. Serrano, if, I'd also ask you to try and not repeat anything that Mr. Katz said, and if you could, keep your comments to two minutes.
I will do so. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, we had, well, I have the good fortune of actually having XL as a client as well as the owners of this, of DeAndres. And when the two kind of converged, that, that it was a pretty, pretty kind of fortuitous opportunity. Just to expound a little bit on the programmatic use of what XL would like to do with it, it is a customer innovation group that's occupying, that wants, intends to occupy this space as an innovation lab. The space is being designed right now to be kind of, have a, kind of an empty room that faces the, the street, and then have kind of an innovation lab hub, scrum area that will, will be a think tank for, you know, alternative energy uses, customer engagement, things like home, home car plug-in, electric car plug-in stations, other, other alternative energies that, that XL wants to celebrate and educate the community on. XL is intending the street-facing side of the, of the, kind of the two-chamber innovation lab to be engaging customer engagement areas, to have video walls, to have educational content playing, constantly kind of trying to engage the street. So I think there's going to be an active use and a, and a, and a community education component to this that XL is excited about having on the street that they just can't get in their typical office, you know, kind of tenant spaces or, or office spaces that are not engaged on the street. So they see this street activation as a, as a huge asset for their educational component to this innovation hub. So my client in conversations in this programming is trying to get things as, as much as actually having charging stations put into this front area that can show and demonstrate how these things work, having other displays that start to talk about their initiatives of alternative energies and, and other things that maybe help the customer basis understand some of the, the unique things that XL is doing to try to, you know, to find different ways to power their customers. So there's a lot of exciting components that are, that are beyond sort of just a, beyond the fact that it is an innovation and think tank, it's not just people sitting in workstations, it's an active kind of laboratory of sort of thought and leadership, and then compounded by the fact that there's, there's this customer and client and street engagement that they intend to actively have going to, to celebrate and message to the public.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. The next person in queue, please.
The next speaker is Ben Shardlow. Ben Shardlow, if you press star six to unmute and make your comment, please state your name for the record.
And if you could keep it to two minutes, please.
I'm going to try my best. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Ben Shardlow, and I, my address is 81 South 9th Street, Suite 260. I'm the Director of Urban Design with the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District. The, the DOD has a longstanding connection to Nicollet Mall. We're actually the successor organization to the Nicollet Mall Advisory Board, which used to be the private partner to the city in making sure that Nicollet is everything that we want it to be, and now that's our job. So we were the, the private partner in the public-private partnership that raised the $50 million to redo Nicollet, and we now maintain the enhanced streetscape on Nicollet. So I'm going to try to keep this brief, but the, the retail spaces along Nicollet are, the storefronts along Nicollet are very important to our work. We have dedicated staff that work on making sure that Nicollet is an active and inviting pedestrian environment. Likewise, we have a team working on making sure that Nicollet is safe. And the, having the, the tenant spaces, the storefronts along Nicollet be occupied is, is critically important to the safety of, of the street, as we all know. So there have been several references made to the purpose of the Nicollet Mall Overlay District. I won't belabor that point, but I will say that from the vantage point of the Downtown Improvement District, we believe that the application is in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We agree with the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association on that point. And I've been working downtown for a long time. If you would have told me several years ago that there was a proposal to fill the ground floor space on Renaissance Square with a full building renovation and breaking up that loud, large ground floor space into multiple tenant spaces with a mix of daytime and evening uses, I would have been delighted. It's also clear, more generally, that it is unclear how well the ratios and provisions in the ordinance accomplish the stated purpose. It's worth noting that right now, the space is in compliance. One large full-floor retail space is, is not a problem. Part of what this proposal application accomplishes is breaking up that large space into a series of smaller spaces, adding more doors on Nicollet, and having a mix of tenants to add some visual interest and activity. Another point that I haven't heard yet in the, in the testimony is that Nicollet is not the only important street we have downtown. If I honestly had to name one street that's rising in significance for our community, it would be Fifth Street. I think all of the investment and development you've seen along Fifth Street is a testament to that, and the fact that all of the, the full frontage of the property along Fifth Street would be occupied by that retail tenant is not insignificant. I noticed in, when Mr. Lyska mentioned that building lobbies are not in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, I had to laugh slightly because I have terrible news, and part of what Nicollet is now is a, is a hybrid corridor. It's our financial district and it's a retail corridor, and we have a lot of building lobbies. I think that there's a lot of good work done by city staff and by others to make sure that we have visual interest, to make sure that building lobbies don't dominate the corridor, but they are important as ways to get up to the upper floors. It's also worth noting that in terms of a space that is, according to the letter of the law, not a retail space, would be occupied by XL, which is already a major stakeholder on Nicollet, that has their headquarters, they're a Fortune 100 company, and they have one and a half blocks of frontage on Nicollet already, and we're very glad to have them. So that, combined with the fact that, as Mr. Katz mentioned, the question of kind of what, what kind of uses are possible now, what will the market bear? I think the work that they've done to try to test that question has been done in good faith, and it's clear that it will be hard in the future to find tenants that can permanently occupy spaces that are as large as this one, 9,000 square feet at this important corner. So in order for Nicollet to evolve as a combination hybrid corridor of, of headquarters and retail, I think we need to look at creative solutions like this. I also want to note that the application satisfies many of the other requirements in the overlay district really well in terms of architectural detail and level of glazing. So I know that I've taken more than my two minutes, but it will be done in about 30 seconds. It's also worth noting, there was a reference made to the comprehensive plan. Nicollet is zoned as destination mixed use. We're already in dialogue with the leadership at CPED about what that means and how we can evolve our understanding of what, what retail is going to be over the next decades to come. And we fully intend to engage with the city staff further in that because definitions and standards, our existing definitions and standards around retail are, are not working. There's a lot of ground floor vacancies in the core of downtown, and we need to work together to figure out what is possible. So in closing, the Downtown Improvement District supports the application because we believe it's in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and we ask you to make an exception to the specific requirements of the overlay district because this application fills a vacancy on a key gateway intersection on our most important pedestrian streets. It subdivides a large space, and it is, it provides a large retail space frontage, fronting on a key side street of downtown on Fifth Street.
All right. Thanks for your testimony. Is there anyone else left in the queue?
There's one final speaker, Mike Lipson. Mike Lipson, press star six to unmute.
And Mr. Lipson, again, please try and keep it to two minutes. And Mr. Lipson, again, please try and keep it to two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brian Lipson. Uh, my company's Tri Coastal Group. We're an owner, uh, in the joint venture of the property, um, and I'll be very brief. Um, I, I want to add just very little here other than to say that we have, um, well, one, I'd like to just confirm everybody can hear me before I keep going.
Yes.
Sorry. Right. Okay. I'd just like to confirm, uh, what we said, uh, earlier that, um, and add slightly in that, um, we have taken the heart, uh, very much the, uh, spirit and the intention of the rules for the street. Uh, we bought the building knowing those rules at the same time as the speaker prior to me mentioned. Um, the, the rules have been, um, in force, uh, roughly about 90 years. They came into force after the building was built and, uh, going back to what was mentioned, they're, they're, although they were crafted and intended for very good public purposes, we think that the combination of the two uses we have, uh, landed for the property are such that we'll be delivering the essentially same package of benefits to the vibrancy, safety, visual interest and the other, um, you know, the other priorities, uh, that have been articulated. Uh, I'll, I'll close with is to say that we really appreciate, um, the way the city has, uh, engaged with us and, uh, we took to heart very much the city's feedback in, uh, furthering our efforts and, uh, to, uh, arrive at these tenancies and we feel fortunate that especially in light of where the economy is today and the hold that's going on across, you know, many businesses, that we have, uh, two well-capitalized, uh, users that plan to be open on that street, uh, very soon and they're both, uh, working very diligently to get open as quickly as they can, provided we can deliver them, you know, the space. And I'll leave it there. Thank you all so much for your time and consideration.
Mr. Lipson, we have someone who has from the board who has a question for you.
Okay.
Mr. Softley, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Perry. And Mr. Lipson, thank you for your testimony. Um, I have a question that relates to your tenant mix and you mentioned how important it is that you have these two potential tenants simultaneously and I'd like to know what your plan is when one or both tenants decide to move out of that building, uh, under the assumption that we were to grant the variance today.
Uh, well, we have long-term leases in both cases, so to make sure I understand, do you mean in the event they didn't renew under those leases or in the event their businesses failed or?
Sure, let's get more fundamental. When you say a long-term lease, do you envision a 10-year lease or do you envision a 50-year lease?
We have a 10-year lease with renewal options for the 6,000-foot tenant and we have a, uh, five-year lease with Excel with renewal options, this being a, a, a new concept for them, but they have a long-term presence at the corner and they, they seem very committed to the, the use. And that, those are, you know, very, uh, common terms these days and 10 years especially is getting to be long now for a downtown retailer without a right of cancellation on either.
Okay, thank you. And then to follow up, what is your company's approach to filling that space if those tenants don't renew, specifically Excel?
Uh, if we remain the owner of the building at that time and, you know, it's possible, you know, it's hard to know whether we will be, but we would redouble our efforts to do what we did in this case and seek to, uh, comply with all applicable rules ordinances, engage with the community groups, engage with the city and, uh, depending on, you know, what rules are i- in place at that time, do everything we can to, as we did here, to comply with them and, you know, we, we have gone to a lot of, uh, I know expense is not an issue, so we'll just say we've been, we've persevered in, uh, difficult circumstances to deliver what we believe is the closest we can come to the black letter of the ordinance, um, you know, within reason. So we would do that again. That's how we operate. We're not seeking to, you know, get a special, uh, break from anyone, and quite the contrary.
Is there anything that would prohibit, no, let me rephrase that question. With the two potential tenants, are they? They're being presented to me, at least it seems, as a package deal. Is that a true statement? Do you have to have one tenant to get the other tenant?
Uh, the actuality is it, it would put at great risk the market, um, from finalizing its lease and its construction plan, which is very, very close, were we to not, um, have the space next to them leased to a stable, you know, and an active user. So in this case, they're fully aware that it's a Excel, it's a credit, it's a long-term member of the community, space would be occupied, you know, and frequently used. Um, and, and that's very important to them as the floor configures and as their store configures because they're on the corner in 6,000 feet separated from the rest of the building and the skyway in particular, which is on our, you know, where skyway connected by, um, that Excel space, which is a little over 4,000, uh, feet. Well, unusable, it's about 4,000.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lipson. I appreciate it.
Sure, sure.
All right. Uh, thanks for your testimony. Um, and with that, I will close the, let me just make sure, is that, was that the last speaker in queue?
I believe, well, it was for a applicant.
Yes, that was the last speaker registered on.
Okay. Thanks for your testimony, Mr. Lipson. Um, and with that, I will close the public hearing, board comment. Mr. Sandberg.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I think this proposal is very different from what we heard last August, which was general, um, office space. And I'm very pleased to see, um, that the retail space wraps around the Fifth Street side. I would say one of the unique characteristics of this building is that it presents a sim, a similar frontage on Nicollet and Fifth Street and almost can be perceived as the same frontage when you look at the building from, uh, especially the north or eastern end of the, uh, of Nicollet. Um, and especially because there's a plaza across the street, that side of the building is very much open to, uh, view from Nicollet. So I think that's a unique characteristic, characteristic of this building, which would certainly support, uh, changing its, its Nicollet frontage requirements. I think the other unique characteristics about the pillars inside and the structural constraints also present a, a challenge to making it entirely retail. So, um, I, I certainly support the applicant's, um, position in those cases and I'd like to hear from other board members.
Great. Thank you. I have a question of staff, maybe to just push this conversation along a little bit. Mr. Lisca, could you remind us, uh, what other, um, uses might be considered by the applicant? Clearly they're facing some challenges in trying to find leaseholders. Uh, so, um, I'm wondering what the city is, is thinking about in terms of filling the space if they were not to, uh, get the variance that they're requesting.
Sure. Uh, yeah, they'd be limited to, uh, retail sales and service uses. That's a fairly large umbrella. And then again, uh, the food and beverage uses.
So what do you say about, uh, what does the city staff say about the loading dock issue that has come up?
I think that, I mean, the Nicollet Mall Overlay is a policy decision. Uh, the policymakers have determined, uh, a fairly narrow, um, array of uses permitted. And I think that the lack of a loading dock as it relates to that food and beverage, uh, uses definitely would be considered a practical difficulty to me. Um, again, that's not the only use that you can have, but given that the uses are more limited, I do think that the lack of a loading dock, um, the narrow alley there, the proximity to Nicollet Mall and Fifth do present practical difficulties for finding some of these uses here.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Johansson, you have a comment?
I do. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Um, I just want to say I, I, I support staff findings here. Um, I don't feel like we're in a position to change the policy. Um, some of the pleas we've heard today certainly seem like a policy change could be something that is looked at by the city. Um, but I don't feel like setting a precedent now, um, because what's happening to this building in this location, I think a lot of it is the location. Um, but that's my, my point is I support staff findings. Thanks for your time.
So, uh, Mr. Um, Johansson, if I can just follow up with you and then we'll get to Mr. O'Geva. Um, your comment is that the rules maybe need to be changed, but we're not a policymaking body to change them.
Totally. Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, but I, I agree. I think the, if there, if there's a need like this, you know, we haven't seen other facilities or buildings along the mall repeatedly ask for this and that maybe adds some to the site itself, but, um, I've been in the building. It is different. It's challenging, um, but it could be served, in my opinion.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Mr. O'Geva.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Um, I actually disagree with the comments, uh, made by, uh, Board Member Johansson. Um, in looking at this, I, I do believe that there are practical difficulties that, uh, reside with this space. Um, I do not believe those are caused by the applicant and, and I think there's a number of things that can, that can be put in there. Um, you know, looking at the age of the building, um, at the physical setup of that, including the depths of the space, making it difficult to comply with a 60% ratio, the corner wrapping nature of the space that, um, makes the, um, 60% frontage ratio, uh, also difficult to comply with. Um, and simply the fact that this is set vacant for, uh, again, well over a decade. The, um, applicant had, uh, mentioned 15 years, which, uh, I find very viable and, and believable from, from seeing that empty. So, um, the age of time that it's taken to lease that, the difficulty in leasing a 9,000 square foot space for this type of use in a downtown urban setting, um, as, as well as the, um, positioning of light rail that, um, is in there, I think creates practical difficulties from complying with the ordinance that's written. I also believe that it's reasonable use, um, to look at this from a standpoint of being mixed use, to have, uh, for-sale, um, products from a retail standpoint on the corner as well as a combination of office space. That would bring additional foot traffic to that area. Um, I think of, uh, the Target, um, further south down Nicollet, the, uh, is, is, I think it's, uh, tongue-in-cheek called the Target Playground that was added, uh, across from Target Headquarters, um, as being something that, uh, was an exception to this rule that allowed for non-retail use, uh, but still activating storefronts and keeping, uh, previously closed storefronts open on Nicollet Mall is something, um, that shows it being reasonable. And then finally, I, I think it keeps in the spirit and intent of the ordinance and actually improves the, uh, safety and character of the building or of the, of the corner, uh, by having that occupied by, um, uh, both office, additional office and retail use. So I think it actually improves that character and would be outstanding within the ordinance. So those are, those are my points of view on the three findings, um, that we would have to make, uh, should we choose to, uh, look positively upon this variance application.
Okay. Are there any other board, thanks for those comments, Mr. O'Geva. Any other board comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion from, um, either, uh, someone who was for or against, uh, granting the variance request. Mr. Sandberg? I'm, I'm sorry. I, I got out of queue. Uh, Mr. Johansson had the, uh, got in there before you.
Okay. Oh, no. Oh, no. I will, I will yield the floor to, uh, Mr. Sandberg in this case.
Okay. Mr. Sandberg?
Um, yeah, I'd like to move, uh, that we grant the variance, um, as applied for. I think that, uh, Mr. O'Geva's findings were well-stated and, uh, I hope staff has recorded those.
All right. And Mr. Hutchinson or Hutchins?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and second that to move the motion forward with the applicant.
Okay, there is a, there is a motion and a second and I want to make sure that staff has the findings that have been, um, put forward by both Mr. Sandberg and Mr. O'Geva. And staff?
I got them. Yep, we're good.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlessen?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Nay.
O'Geva?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Softley?
Nay.
That's five yea, two nay. Thank you.
All right. And with that, the motion passes, uh, to the applicant and their team. Uh, your request has been granted. Good luck with your project, uh, and thank you for taking this on and activating that corner. Um, that concludes our land use requests. Um, is there any old business? I see, I, no one seems to be coming up with any old business, any new business? No new business and with that, um, I would entertain a motion to, um, adjourn. Mr. Sandberg?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Hutchins?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlessen?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
I want to say nay, but I'm going to say yea.
Noted. O'Geva?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Softley?
Aye.
That's eight yea.
Thank you very much, everyone, um, for a successful, uh, first meeting, virtual meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I also want to thank staff and IT for making this possible.